Would council members please come to the dais? And everybody else, please take a seat in one of the circles. Any circle, it doesn't matter which one. But try to spread yourselves out so we have somebody in each circle. Thank you. I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Bloomington Common Council for Wednesday, September 11th, 2024. Will Clerk Bolden please call the roll?
Councilmember Flaherty is not here. Councilmember Zulik?
Here.
Rallo?
Here.
Ruff?
Here.
Piedmont Smith?
Here.
Sossberg?
Here.
Basari?
Very present.
Rosenbarker? Nope. Ann Daly?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to our land and labor acknowledgement. We recognize that the city of Bloomington sits on native land. The city, as well as city administrative buildings, are on the traditional homelands of the Miami, Delaware, Potawatomi, and Shawnee people. And we acknowledge they are past, present, and future caretakers of this land. We also acknowledge that much of the economic progress and development in Indiana, and specifically Bloomington, resulted from the unpaid labor of people of color, specifically enslaved African labor. We acknowledge that this land remains home to and a site of gathering and healing for many indigenous and other people of color, and commit to the work necessary to create and promote a more equitable and just Bloomington. We move forward knowing and acknowledging our rich, complicated, and sometimes painful past so that we can learn from it and create a true land of opportunity. So tonight's agenda will, first of all, we will have a recap of our August 14th consensus building activity on street homelessness. Then we will have two presentations regarding proposals for city action that came out of that August 14th session. One is short term, which is greater availability of public restrooms for unhoused individuals. And the other is long term revisions to the Unified Development Ordinance to allow for more affordable housing options. And under that heading, we will talk about single-room occupancy buildings and revising the definition of family to address the housing distribution problem. So Councilmember Zulik will do an overview of the UDO possibilities that I just mentioned. Then Jolene Borgonzi from the Community Justice and Mediation Center will give some guidelines for our group discussions. And then about seven o'clock, we intend to break out into discussion groups. And in order to not have everybody in this room, and it would be very hard to hear if we had all the groups in this room, we will have Groups 4 and 5 in the atrium, where there are circles of chairs set up, and Group 6 in the McCloskey Room, which is out these doors and to the left. So at that time, we will let you know when to go into the groups. And then after about an hour, we will come back and have a focused discussion, or I'm sorry, we'll have a large group debriefing led by Jolene. And then we will talk about next steps, and we will adjourn. We'll try to finish in about two hours. So I will now ask my colleagues to sit with the group that you are assigned to, and if you're not assigned a group, you can just sit in the observer area. And I will do the brief overview of August 14th and then pass it over to Councilmember Daly for an overview of the public restroom issue. Okay, so on August 14th, we had our first session on the topic of street homelessness and what the city council can do to address this issue in our community. At that time, we first kind of reviewed what is the purview of the city council, and then we broke into breakout groups to discuss first the how, what people thought were the most important problems to address regarding street homelessness and what actions the city could take. And then after we did a group debriefing of those, every group leader kind of came up and summarized what was discussed. Then we went back into our breakout groups and tried to just choose one thing that we wanted to focus on for the city council to do and how that action might be taken. And we did share, I hope everybody who was here that day, and even if you weren't, I hope you have seen the notes from that session. Thank you to C.JAM facilitators for their extensive note-taking. If you haven't seen them, they are on the city council website. If you go to our meetings link and click on August 14th, you'll see, I think it's called Packet because we, for some reason, we can't call it anything else. But anyway, that's where all the notes are. So now I will hand it off to Councilmember Daly to talk about one thing that was mentioned again and again on August 14th, and that is having more accessible public restrooms for people. Councilmember Daly? There you are. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Piedmont Smith. Clerk Bolden, I'm so sorry, do you have the document with the? Thank you. So we had decided that tonight would be helpful to break into two different action plans, a short-term, a more immediate action plan, and then a longer-term action plan. So when we were looking at the short-term, more immediate needs, we noticed that from the group meeting last time, repeatedly and consistently from each of the groups, we heard the need for more access to restrooms. And so we decided that should be our number-one short-term action plan that we can look into. So we started doing the research about, well, what is the situation right now for the restrooms in the parks and parking garages? And so you can see up here on the screen, there are multiple restrooms around the city. Some of them are seasonal, some of them are year-round, they are patrolled by security. And you can see, security currently works until 9:00 p.m. patrolling, and then two officers do from 9:00 p.m. to 2:00 p.m. around the other restrooms, or around the other parks, and locking the restrooms. So there are currently several portlet locations, and those are accessible at all times. The main barrier to keeping our park and parking garage restrooms open is vandalism. And so we have had the discussion and looked into possibly, well, what would it look like if we extended security and had more security to keep the restrooms open? That's not necessarily going to be a feasible plan. That's a big undertaking, and there will be, you know, fiscal repercussions, of course. So we're still in conversations regarding how we can expand access to restrooms. So we're looking into, and I know this is something that the mayor's office has also been open to discussing, so there are possibilities moving forward in terms of more portlets around different park locations and making them more accessible. So this is not something that the city council actually can do. We don't have the authority to keep restrooms open or to add more portlets, but it is something that we can support and track the progress on. And so that is where we currently are with the issue of the restrooms, and we're hoping to keep that ball moving forward. And now I will turn it over to Councilmember Zulik. Sorry.
Thanks so much for being here.
Clerk Bolden, would you be willing to scroll, please, down? Oh, is there a different document that we could? Oh, okay. I have it. I just wasn't sure if we could present it.
Okay. Okay. I do not have a visual, so I'll just tell you all. Thank you all so much for being here. My name is Sydney Zulik. I represent District 6, which is the downtown area and most of campus. So along with a short-term action, we are focused on two specific long-term actions, both in terms of amending something called the Universal Development Ordinance, also known as shorthand for the UDO. So that has to do with a lot of zoning requirements across the city. There are a lot of different types of districts, like residential, commercial, that's all under the UDO. So the first long-term action item that we are focused on is allowing more single-room occupancy buildings, also known as SROs. They are any type of rental unit that rooms are rented, in particular, like bedrooms, instead of renting an entire apartment unit. So people can rent rooms and have shared living spaces in terms of like living room, bathrooms, kitchen with other individuals who are renting other rooms in an apartment or housing unit. So we're talking about renting, excuse me, we're talking about amending different definitions. We currently have something called residential rooming housing, which typically refers to lodging inside a house. So it doesn't really cover apartments in the same way. Obviously, apartments have the opportunity to have a lot more people in the same area, and so that's kind of where we're approaching it from the standpoint of this is a low-cost, or it could be, a low-cost option for individuals or couples being diverted from homelessness or moving out of homelessness. And we're discussing whether or not it should include support, and so that's kind of one of the things that we're looking for. Your feedback on we, oh, thank you. It's up. So one of the potential drawbacks is that depending on the size and the zoning districts, these buildings might not necessarily blend in with different neighborhoods, and so that's another thing that we would need to talk about, is what kinds of zones we would be allowing these SROs to be in. This is important in particular for me because I am a renter. I understand what the renting experience is like, and having SROs as another option is a lot more financially solvable for a lot of people. Anyway, so that's the first one. And then the second one is changing the definition of family under the Universal Development Ordinance. Currently, it's put in a way where three people who are unrelated under the age of 55 is the maximum amount of people who can live in an apartment unit or a housing unit who are unrelated. So that makes it a little bit difficult if there are four or five bedrooms, but only three people who are unrelated can stay in that house. And so we're trying to tackle the housing distribution shortage with this solution, and we have a couple different options to address the issue. Clerk Bolden, would you please scroll a little bit more? Okay. Okay, stop. Okay. So we have a couple different options to address the issue. Number one, the way that it currently stands is it's, this is only applicable to individuals under the age of 55. So to make it a little bit more equitable, we are considering deleting the 55-plus exception. That would obviously be in tandem with some other things that we can make sure that we're increasing housing availability and not decreasing. Number two is increase the number of unrelated individuals to either four or five so that we can ensure that we can put people in the amount of bedrooms there are and not an arbitrary three. And then limiting the number of individuals according to the number of bedrooms in the house in comparison to just limiting the number of individuals per house or apartment unit. And then number four is just make, okay, make one or more of the above changes while at the same time increasing enforcement of noise and parking regulations. So there are, oh, good, thank you. There are a couple different benefits and also potential drawbacks. You want to make sure that we are understanding what we could potentially be losing in addition to understanding what we could be gaining. We are hoping to have a higher number of affordable units in a single house with a greater possibility of filling vacancies per bedroom instead of per unit. And then one of the things that we're talking a lot about is there really is no set definition of family. There are plenty of people who have individuals in their life who they consider family but aren't legally related, don't have the same last name. And so we would be approaching things in a little bit more of an equitable way in terms of what family means to people in Bloomington. There are always going to be some drawbacks. There are potentially going to be, not a parking shortage, but there are going to be fewer parking spaces available. But I will say statistically renters are less likely to have vehicles, so that might be one of the ways that, that can be one of the things that we talk about today in our groups. And then it might be a little bit noisy and a little bit messier. That is generally the case when you increase the amount of people, especially when you're in a college town. But those are the different potential benefits and drawbacks, and I'm sure there are more, and I'm sure that we will all talk about them in our individual groups. But that is my presentation. I really appreciate you all being here today. I look forward to discussing this more with Group 6 and discussing with my colleagues on the rest of the groups and their thoughts. Thank you.
Jolene Borgonzi from C.JAM here, and my colleagues are joining one in each group to co-facilitate and give some note-taking support, detailed note-taking that we'll submit to the council after tonight's session. I'd like to introduce them. Vanessa Roberts, John Vanderzee, Amy Roche, Wilson, what's your last, Mosley? And Susan Klein in this group. Thank you for that, enthusiastic, welcome. And I'm going to tell you a little bit about public engagement, but before we split into groups, let me mention something about the groups. If you're intending to join a group, you know, there are spaces in these two groups here and a few around the room. Three of the groups, Groups 4, 5, and 6, will leave this part of the room. They'll go into the atrium. 4 was in the hall, 5 is over there in the atrium, and 6 will be down the hall to the left in the McCloskey Room. And then we'll come back at the end to have a large group deliberation. Someone will go around with a two-minute sign, both before the half-hour, where we're going to end the discussion of the first UDO option, and then at the end of our small group and before we come back. So please, everyone, pay attention to when we're ending one topic, going to the next, and coming back to this room. That'll help us. Thank you. So about public engagement, we're going to do some dialogue tonight and hopefully deliberation. Deliberation goes beyond just talking and listening to each other. It goes to looking deeper, more deeply at what the trade-offs are of the various issues, what we value, what we need, what we're afraid of, those kinds of things. We talk openly about that. We don't need to defend any position. This is very different from our political and academic default, where we do a lot of debating or three minutes of commenting. That's not like this. So I'm going to ask you all to sort of try and switch off that default setting that we have because that's our culture, for better or for worse. So in here, we're going to practice something else. I think it's something that's hopeful for public engagement in the future, and so, fingers crossed, okay. So it does help address the nuances of these complex issues. It's not just one thing or the other, right? We have a lot of nuances to consider. The group facilitators are going to help as much as they can with regulating, but we're asking everyone to have consideration of these agreements. Here are the group agreements, and I'm going to ask if you agree to them. They're voluntary. If you don't wish to participate or practice those with us tonight, we have an open area here, the observer area, that you're welcome to stay if you'd like. The group agreements to support the spirit of constructive conversation so that everyone feels supported to share their experiences and their thoughts is, number one, speak from your own experience using I-statements, being honest and respectful. You all are the expert in your own perspective. Number two, listen to understand. Please try and stay engaged with understanding the other members of the group as much as you can. It's certainly okay to disagree. That's number three. It's okay to disagree. Please do so with curiosity. Like you might say, could you clarify that? I'm wondering what you mean by, could you say more about? That's being curious about something. And four, be concise so everyone has a chance to speak. And again, if you don't want to do that, you can sit over here in the area, the observer open area. I'm going to ask if you would agree to those agreements, to raise your hand. Yes, thank you all very much. Okay. Now, as I said, we're going to be taking detailed notes. And so how are you most going to contribute to the deliberation to allow this creativity to arise, especially if you feel disturbed, right? This is a big thing. We sometimes feel disturbed, we're not sure what to do with it, what are we going to say? Do we have to say anything? You can, again, be curious. Can you say more about that? I'd like to understand what you mean by and why you think that. So we're going to go into our groups, and in a half-hour, switch topic, and then in another half-hour, come back here for a large group debriefing. Groups 4, 5, and 6, I invite you to move. And if you don't want to move and you want to take a seat in Group 1, 2, or 3, you're welcome to do that as well. The last part of our meeting today, we call debriefing. It's how we learn about the process. We learn about how to go forward, not in the action steps per se that we were talking about in the groups. This is about the process of dialogue and deliberation, about the process of civic engagement, and what you experienced here tonight. So the questions we're asking, and John will give you a mic if you'd like to answer, start with, what did you notice? What went well for you tonight?
I think it went well that our group was relatively small. So then everybody got a chance to really communicate and kind of get to know each other well and understand where everybody was coming from because there were, what, two, four, six, seven of us, so that was good.
It doesn't sound like that was on, did it?
Is this working?
I didn't hear what was said.
I don't know how this works.
I'll just use this mic then and say that I think it worked really well for us that our group only had seven members in it, so then we were all able to really talk and communicate well about our topic.
Anything about this? What else did you notice? What went well? Isa?
I think that it was a lot easier to discuss with very clear things to be reacted to. You know, I think that in our last conversation here, we had a very wide open, you know, sort of space to discuss, and I think that this was a very fruitful, we were talking about one thing, and we're trying to triangulate around it, and I think having a small group of elderly people was a lot of fun, and elderly people plus people was a lot of fun.
So the focus of the deliberation helped?
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, hi, everyone. Thanks for being here. One of the things that I think went really well in my group is because of our small size, I think a lot of people felt more comfortable sharing and coming at the issue from a personal perspective, and I felt like I got to learn a lot about like different perspectives throughout the community, and I really appreciated that everyone felt comfortable sharing.
Thank you. So the size of the group and the authenticity of the people in the group, their honesty contributed to our learning.
What's that?
You have to talk right on it.
Right on it, right here? Is it working? Well, this is going to sound redundant, but being in a smaller group, last time, there were a lot of ideas, which were really great, and it was, I didn't, wasn't really interacting last time, I was listening a lot and taking a lot of notes. This time, there was, with a smaller group, there was a lot more interaction, discussion. And I found it really interesting to test ideas because I had some ideas that I don't think were very well thought out or valid, so they were, it was good to have them challenged or, you know, tested.
So the small group helped us do a little more reality testing of different ideas, how to face challenges.
I think also because we had a really good amount of time with our groups, and again, I will go to the small sizes, that helped us really dig deep into some of the questions and not necessarily go down rabbit holes, but to kind of bring up other viewpoints and, you know, sidebars of, well, if this, then, then that, and just other areas that we hadn't considered before because we had so much time.
So it seemed to be a little more satisfying this time to go more deeply into the topic. I'm just wondering, raise your hand if you learned something from a new perspective tonight. Yeah, that's nice. So what would you want to go differently if we did something like this again? How would you want it to change?
Thank you. I would suggest having more pointed discussion points. I think there is moments in our group where we just had like little gaps and pauses and stares and thinking, okay, what do we talk about now? Or what do we do with this with what was just said? So I think just having additional discussion questions would be great, but thank you.
So it helps to have more details for the issues or for the discussion points so we have more to discuss.
A revision is greatly in need as some of the city ordinances and policies that act as impediments when it comes to zoning, groundbreaking, and developing new housing for the homeless, new low-income housing. And I am hopeful, I know Carrie Thompson is invested in this, I spoke to her about it, and my prayers will be on this as something will be done. The problem just keeps deepening and growing broader, and we need action. These meetings are great, but we need action.
The need in- The need increases, and we feel the need for action and the urgency of it.
I was serving as a co-facilitator in this session this time, but one thing that I noted was that we were fortunate that all of the members of our group had some familiarity with the UDO, but had they not, I think it would be some pretty dense discussion. There's just a lot of data and a lot of alphabet soup to it that might be potentially exclusionary and, you know, unintended, but might leave people out if they didn't have a briefing on those things in more depth than this process time allows.
So in order to have more effective deliberation and to have buy-in to meet the challenges that we're facing, it's important to have the knowledge to brief the people who are participating.
Mine's not as much of a critique as just, you know, just encourage the council, I think. This is, these are good discussions, I like the transparency, and, you know, I think we shouldn't let the perfect become the enemy of the good on any of this stuff, and the fact that something is being tried, discussions are being had, deliberations happening, like seeing it through is really important, so I would just encourage the council to keep that up and thank them for doing this, because it's, you know, if we scatter our brains to everything that could happen or every issue that could be addressed, we're, tonight, we've talked about very two specific, two very specific things that I think are really important to look at. They're pretty technical, but if there's something that can be done, there's a measurable impact that can happen, so I would just encourage the council to keep pushing and figure out what's next.
So now that we have buy-in from the people at least who are discussing it here tonight, we also, the council has the pressure of those people tracking that something gets Thank you so much. We're going to turn it over to Isabel for the concluding remarks.
Well, thank you to everybody for participating and being here tonight. I think we all had some fruitful discussions and learned some different perspectives. And I think from this point forward, we, the council, needs to work on moving forward with one or both of these topics as far as the UDO revisions. We will be compiling the notes from this session, making them available to you if you gave your email address out front, and we will be posting them to the city council website as well, under our meetings link. It'll probably be called Pack It, because that seems to be the only word we can use for that. But I think that beyond the two topics that we heard about tonight, I think, or we talked about tonight, at least in my group, there were, there were other ideas, and I think there was a sense of urgency of doing something more concrete sooner than what these two items were, and so I think it's, that's another challenge for the council and charge to us to consider as we move forward. A lot of those things, those more immediate things are more in the executive branch of government, but that doesn't mean we can't advocate and collaborate with the mayor's administration on them. So that's all I had for tonight, so we're actually ending early, so good for us. If you think of any feedback, you can always reach us at the email address council@bloomington.in.gov. We did not prepare a survey this time, but we're always open to additional feedback through our email, or just stop us right now as we finish. So thank you very much.
Thank you.